All right, it is six o'clock on October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call this regular select board meeting of town proctor order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, our first order of business is to review and approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Next up, to approve the regular select board meeting of September twenty-fifth minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then to approve the special select board meeting minutes from October third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Open public comments.
Um, I'd just like to thank everyone that came and attended Fall Festival. We had an amazing turnout, and I think everyone was here. I know most vendors and classes were really happy. Some people sold out of whatever it was that they were selling. So it was, the weather held off. We heard great feedback from everyone, so we just want to thank everyone for coming and supporting us.
I think that's the best one you've ever had.
I know, it's pretty good.
And the reformer did it.
Reporter.
The reporter.
Oh, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, there's great pictures in the report.
Yeah.
Pitch spread.
Yeah, there was one picture in the Herald of the fireworks, so.
Yeah.
We don't know who took that one, but there was.
There was a picture. Okay. John?
I've only got my, uh, I gave, did you read my list?
No, I haven't got, given it to me. It couldn't be on the agenda tonight, so.
Well, I can answer in fourteen days, Tom.
Oh, I know. So just to clarify what John told.
You sound like you're bored, Peter.
Yeah, I have it right here, John.
And also, can we do one thing? The flag of the backwards. Can we put them up always, put it back of you guys? And always, American flag is always on the left of these pictures.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm a veteran. Maybe you people don't care, but it's, you know, I was always there now. And I hear you down in the main seat, it makes me upset.
Well, thank you for letting us know. We could certainly.
But as you face the flag, you notice on TV and everything, the American flag is always on the left when you face it.
So John, John dropped off a list of questions, which I printed out a copy for everybody, and I've also actually answered all of them already. So I'll send those to you so you guys can review and just see if you want to add to it. If your answers are different, just compile it so I can get it back to him within, um, he wanted it in fourteen days, but we'll have it to you much sooner than that.
Okay. There's nobody online, I don't think. So moving to, uh, everyone's had a chance to sign the bills and review the bills?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Kane Street issues and resolutions, and I believe that's with parking.
So I've had a lot of complaints about Kane Street. Um, people parking on the sides of the road, sometime on both sides of the road, um, all the way up, um, at the very top, lots of cars everywhere. And I know we had addressed this before, and I, I knew that we had made a motion at that time, I think, to purchase signs, put them up, no parking. And we did establish that in our traffic ordinance, and that street was one to be no parking on the side. So what I'm looking for tonight is a motion that I can go and purchase signs and have them installed, um, because even the fire department was here at that initial meeting and said there's no way they can get up there with those cars parked on Kane Street.
So the last time we passed the parking ordinance, we did say that there was going to be no parking.
And I do have a copy of that piece of the ordinance, and here's that.
Was that one side or both sides?
Both, I believe.
Yeah.
It was both sides, because I think that's what the fire chief said, was that that street is so narrow. It must be worse in the winter. I can imagine with snowbanks. So is there a motion to authorize the town manager to purchase no parking signs for Kane Street?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Um, review structure and policies for town committees.
So I gave you, I did some hunting back, because I know, I feel like the whole structure of committees has changed over the years. I felt even when I came on board, um, on the board, um, a few years back, that it was much more structured, like the committees were broken up, they were appointed, they met, they came to the meetings, they all have reports, and I feel like it's kind of gotten diluted, and people are just joining committees, nobody's appointing them, and, um, I just kind of want to get a tighter rein on it. So I included the policy just for you guys to review over. There was actually an application process that you had to fill out. If you want to join a committee, you have to file an application, and then it went before the board, and the board appointed those that they felt could serve on the committee. And then the committees, one, this is one thing I'm looking for is, um, it used to be there was a chair of each committee and also a clerk of the committee, so the chair was the one who did, um, all the, you know, um, called the meeting to order and the structure just like you would hear, and then the clerk would do the minutes and also the agenda. And that way, I'm looking to have those people post the agendas and then give me the minutes to post online and stuff. So I just, and, and, and part of this was brought on because of concern of people who serve on committees, um, that are using social media as a platform for themselves or for others, and I feel like whether it's going to be in our policy or if it's going to be a separate policy for social media, that when you represent the town on any committee, you're representing the town and to not voice your negative opinions about things that are going on where we conduct the business. So I think it's important that everyone's on the same page, and whether it's, we invite all the committee members into at some point just to kind of go over it.
That line does get a little blurred, I think.
It creates a lot of problems, so.
So unless there's discussion, would it make sense for everybody to take a look at this and we can revisit it at our next meeting?
Yeah, and just come with ideas, like if you, you know, structuring and stuff, and then kind of like, when I went way back, there was, you know, so many more committees, and those have just kind of, we had a highway committee, we had a finance committee, we had every possible committee you could name, and now it's basically parks and rep in Beaver Pond, you know? So. Okay. You be okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, next we have the recommended assessment change from original value.
So this was the property on seventeen twenty-five Florence Road, where, um, it was just assessed for property, land, and then it was brought to our attention that there's actually some structures on that. So our assessor went up, our lister went up and looked at it and met with the property owner, and there was structure on it. So she, it was a standing structure that was, um, it wasn't used, nobody's living there or anything, but there, it is a bigger building, so she assessed it with that. There also was a storage container, I believe, and a camper, but because we haven't, um, charged assessed anybody's property who has storage containers on them, we can't do that until we revisit the process and see if that's something feasible that we want to do down the road or something, so. So she just assessed it at, at this, um, value from the thirty thousand eight hundred thirty dollars to sixty thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
So they didn't get a permit then either?
Not when he built, not when he put them up, no.
Any discussions or questions on this? I think we need a motion to recommend the, the lister's new two thousand and twenty-three assessment of sixty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's so hard when I put these agendas together, things haven't happened yet, and then like, I'm like, we had dumpster, we had dumpster, but it's more of just a follow-up to it. So there was about, um, when I, in my manager's report, we had sold, we had sold, we had given away thirty-five permits, but by the time closed day Friday, we'd actually gotten rid of, I think, sixty-two or sixty-five permits. So, um, there was about sixty-plus that showed up, and, um, the guy said that very few came for a second load, and those that did were primarily just brush, like tree rubbish, you know, things like that. So he said it actually went very well, really smooth, so.
How many dumpsters did we fill, do we know?
Uh, he didn't tell me that. We had four, so I'm guessing he probably filled it before.
Probably, yeah.
Then I can check that with him later.
That'd be great. Any questions or comments about dumping? Any other business before we move into water commissioners? If there is none, do I have a motion to recess the regular select board meeting and convene the board of water commissioners?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Delinquent accounts.
All right, so I attached a copy, and these are only delinquent accounts with agreements that you have in front of you right now, but some of them, um, even though, and these were for the month of September, some of them they were concerned about because some people come in like the month before and pay double, or the month after pay double, but I am going to talk to her about these, and a lot of these were on the previous list that I had given you, and some cannot be shut off because of the circumstances, um, a lot of them because their tenant occupied and the homeowners aren't there, so it's kind of getting around that. But these other ones who haven't paid, and I gotta check back to see if it was both August, September, we only have a short window of time right now if any can be shut off, but, um, I'm gonna give that list to the guys and see what they can do over the next couple weeks, so. And usually, like lately, it's been the phone call or a letter, and they, they come in and pay. So that's what happened the last time. There was one that I think I put an asterisk on. Yeah, oh, that's the one that I, um, the Emerald Acres, that's the one that has nothing, and it's, it just keeps going up and up, and that's the one with the tenants in it. Who is that? It's on, um, oh, I always want to say High Street, it's not, um, Pine, um, up by, behind the Vermont Marble Company, the duplex.
Pine Street? No.
Pine Street. Well, it, does it keep saying, does it say to Pine to the company? Oh, where the back, like the parking lot is. Where swans used to live.
Oh, 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 okay.
I think that's, yeah.
I think that is Pine Street.
Yeah, I was wondering where that.
And it keeps going up. I mean, nothing's being done, so that's when we'd like to figure out what we can do about that. So is that who owns, so what do they actually own there? The duplex. That little duplex where you used to cut through and go sidewalk school, the grade school? Oh, okay, yeah, oh, I forgot, yeah, that was a duplex.
Oh, by the telephone office?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Just one side occupied?
I think both were.
Okay.
But I gotta double check on that, so.
Yeah, that's true. We still.
Yeah.
This one's on, I mean, at that point, a tax sale at that point.
Yes, sir. I mean, if we can turn tomorrow, are we going to have a tax sale?
Oh, yeah.
We talked about it, there's like three other properties she wants to.
Living on the other side.
Yeah. Right, now I'll know that one too with each one. Yeah, because that's a lot.
That's a lot.
It's gonna end up being, uh.
Probably, uh.
Oh, my God.
Is there anything else under Board of Water Commissioners?
Forty and fifty.
Yes.
Yes.
It was brought up at the last meeting about the status of fifty-two Main. Has anything been found out about that, or is that still?
Fifty-one Main, you mean the Marble Building?
The, uh.
Zion.
Zion.
Zion, this is the building.
Oh, no, um, I sent you an email today, but that's not on the agenda today, so.
Yeah, in fact, there were two emails.
For one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's kind of been on hold for now. I have.
Not about the activity on it, but just if they're on this list or not, because it was discussed in the last meeting.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Whether they were on the.
No.
Delinquent, our budget plan.
Right, yeah, I did speak with them today, though, and I sent them an email.
Okay.
So, and I've just requested information in writing, so we have it to review. They are on this list, so, no, that's weird. I think it's, I find it odd. No.
Anything else for water commissioners? Okay. If not, is there a motion to adjourn the board of water commissioners and convene the board of sewer commissioners?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Response letter to Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation from June inspection.
So we had a June inspection, and they wrote us back and gave us a to-do list, they gave us recommendations, and they gave us requirements within that, um, that review. So I, they wanted a letter back by October ninth, I believe. So I wrote them back, um, and I listed all the recommendations that they listed and what we've done. So, um, flushing the wash stations weekly, we're currently doing that, developing an, um, an editable, not edible, but editable digital reference map for a collection system. Um, Public Works flushed the hydrants and located all the valves, and then A and E's providing assistance in developing, developing that map. Um, continue developing algae response methods for future blooms. They're coordinating with the state to purchase bulk loads of barley straw, which is the best thing that, learning lots about this stuff, um, to break it down and stuff, so, um, other places use it, because it's usually the highest recommended thing, so that's why they're trying to buy it in bulk. Draft and maintain maintenance inspection plan of the plant and collection system. There's no data sheets yet that have been provided to them from A and E. And then the requirements are to print, um, emergency action plans, and they're meeting with A and E in the next couple of weeks, and they're doing those together. Um, implement regular camera inspections of stream crossings. They were doing that, they're waiting for their camera, because the camera has, was broken, so they're having it repaired. And I'm going to touch upon that, too, I think in my manager's report maybe. Um, and then submit updated O M E R plan upon receipt from Aldrich and Elliott, and they said they should have that to us soon. And then we need to hire a designated chief operator by twelve thirty-one twenty-three. So, um, and we've talked about that, I've talked about that with Kyle, and I've talked about that with the guys who are doing the work right now, so that's something we'll probably have to do over the next month.
This doesn't look like anything, uh, too much.
No, it wasn't anything major. Yeah.
Good. Great. Any other questions or comments about sewer? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the board of sewer commissioners and reconvene the regular select board meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, sheriff's report.
Looks, I like the new format, it's a lot easier to, to go through.
It is broken down.
Okay.
One question?
You might be the way I printed, but I didn't know.
It's on page three of six, the page number's on the bottom right-hand corner.
Three of six.
Three of six.
Yep.
It's the report ID, it's the first, second, third, fourth one down, five, two, five, eight, nine, for half an hour, R C S D fixing cruiser cam, I would assume that's camera. You know, I can understand why they want the camera and fix it, but why is the town of Proctor charged a half an hour for that labor? Why isn't it charged to county sheriff as equipment?
Well, I don't think it's equipment, my guess is it's either the car cam or his body cam, and if something is wrong with it, maybe he was adjusting it, so he's on duty and had to fix it.
It's the cruiser.
Okay, so it's probably on the cruiser, but he's probably like in town or something, is my guess.
And why would one charge for it?
Yeah, that seems like a.
For his time?
Yeah.
We're charged half an hour.
You know, I mean, we don't.
I can see fixing.
Oil changes, electric reserves.
Right, well, I, what I, I'm, what I'm saying is I don't think, I don't know, I don't know if he went to a body shop and had, or a shop and had something done, or if he was at Route or someplace and noticed something was wrong and fixed it himself, so he's on duty, it's his time, and that's when he's doing it. That's what I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, but I would think he would still charge it to county sheriff's department budget, not on Proctor's budget.
So can we clarify that for Fox?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's ask him.
You know, that same thing appears on page five of six, you know, the second one down. It's kind of, uh, mixed in with a couple of other items, but fixing car computer stand. Between ours is sixteen hundred and seventeen hundred. You know, there's several items listed there, but again.
Yeah.
You know, that's the maintenance, and I would think the maintenance to be charged against the county sheriff's department budget, not the town of Proctor budget. Granted, it's nice, and he probably needs it fixed, but.
That was an hour or two.
Yeah.
But it looks like he did other things.
Did other things, you know, with it, so it's kind of hard to break out just his time.
Right, and it does look like he was in town, because before that, he was in South Street, and then after that, he was on Kane Street.
Yeah.
And then Market Street after that. But it's, I think it's always good to clarify that with.
Don't mark the question, Sheriff.
All right. Keep them honest. Anything else for the sheriff's report? Town manager's report.
Wait for my questions. Okay, um, so the assessor, um, I met with her last week, and she said that we need to start thinking about moving forward if we want a townwide appraisal, because even if we decide now, it's probably going to be at least two years old, so.
Yeah, so she think we need to go out with an R F P or?
Probably, she's, the reason she wouldn't, she wasn't going to be here tonight, she's going to come back, but she's waiting because of the state, they're changing plans, software programs, so it's gonna be a real headache or nightmare for her. She's pushing one way to try to get one versus another, just for ease and, you know, consistency. So she wanted to get that all buckled up, she was meeting with them this week, and then she'd have more information to give us on how they're using it, what they're using. But she said, you know, it's definitely, it's well overdue, and I just think with the market the way it's been too, it's might be.
Yeah, with the market the way it is, ooh.
Very well. When you say it's well overdue, is it because of the coefficient of dispersion, was it?
Uh, I think it's, you know, they, they try to do it every ten years, you know, unless it's really.
There is a formula that they use.
I thought the state did for.
Yeah, and once you're above a certain.
If you're outside, you know, the deviation, then you're penalized.
Right, but you go back three years, so even once you do it, you're always looking backwards, you're never looking current or forward for that. So it hasn't really caught up to us, I guess, so to speak, because you are always looking backwards, yeah.
And there are some towns that it already has caught up to, and so they really do need, I, I think this is more for saying, we got to put it on the radar, because it's going to, there are only so many companies in New England that do this, and we're a very small town, and so to get someone to come here to do it is.
Yeah.
It's going to take some like work. Everybody everywhere is in the same. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's time to.
That would give us standard budget, too.
Right, yeah, definitely.
That's great, two years old.
Okay, um, there was a water leak at the Marble Museum this week, um, so the water was shut off for the repair, and when they were repairing it, they found a second leak. So we had to shut the water off and, um, have a boil water notice go out, and it just affected Main Street, so except, uh, affected everything from Simpsons Building all the way to, um, the Geology Building. So, no, actually, Geology Building, I don't think was affected, because they're on another line.
Yeah.
So, so we sent the notice out first, and then when they found the other leak, we had to extend the boil water, and then we had to have it overnight, because they said they couldn't get the testing back so soon enough. Then the tests came back, like verbally, it came back earlier, but we wanted to wait till it came back in written form, and I didn't get that till like three-thirty on Friday. So then I, we, we called Simpsons both times to let them know so they could contact their tenants, and we put notices on all the buildings as well. All right, uh, let's see. Uh, hydrants were flushed, when I wrote this, it was last week, it was the week before last week. So the plow was ordered, that was approved. Um, Public Works is looking to repair the Florence Road, leaf cleanup in the driveway at the end of Sandra Vito's house that was, um, kind of creating a problem when they did the roadwork there a few years back up on Kane Street. Um, and they also did a water dig on Newton Street. Kyle's ordered the salt, and we're going to have oil, the oil company come to top up their, our generators, because that needs to be done. Um, okay, and then again, I mentioned dump day already. Um, attended the town fair with Mount Leaks and Sizzie in Towns, good information, also met with Louis Masur, our risk management contact from V L C T, he actually came down here, had a couple problems, recommendations after site visit to town garage, but all were low priority, nothing major. Um, he also shared next year's moderate with me for both workers' comp and, um, property and casualty. Workers' comp has stayed the same, but property and casualty rose much higher than I'd like to see, um, from one point one five, which isn't good, to one point three three. Um, workers' comp remains at point eighty-nine, which is great, and that's probably the lowest we could ever get at. That's, that's huge, and it's almost better having your risk on the property and casualty than on the workers' comp.
Yeah.
Because that's on your books long, and it can stay open for a long time. So a lot of that was all the sewage backups and problems there, so cleanups. And again, they go three years back, too, and do these moderates, so. Okay, the stormwater master plan, when we met at the library, um, they reached out to me today, and I'm doing a Zoom meeting with them next week, um, for a follow-up and next steps, so.
What day is that, Julie?
The nineteenth.
What time?
Also looking into a safety grant through Passif, which is our property and casualty insurance. They have a safety grant, and they still have funds used, so I kind of reached out to Public Works. Um, I asked them if they possibly would want another camera for scoping for pipes, especially because that one broke, and he said the one they have is very good, though, but he said they had a couple other items that might fall under that grant, so they're going to get those to me, and I'll apply for those to see. They have to be safety related, so. Okay, I have here the list of questions for the select board from John, so I will pass those out to you all after. Um, the, um, house on twenty-six fifty-one West Street where the fire was, I finally made connections with the owner. Um, they're working on getting the previous testing from their mortgage company, because no one else seems to have it. Um, I did issue the health order to them on October fourth, um, and she responded immediately to me and said they're trying to get this taken care of, because they definitely want to get back in there. So I'm going to give her a call this week and ask if she's got anything for the mortgage company, otherwise they're, they're going to have to go and hire a investigator to do the asbestos report, because if nobody has it, it's not, they're not going to move forward until then, so.
Yeah. It's gone a long way through.
But at least I have a contact now, and I know, and she's been communicating with me, so that's good. Books in the vault, I believe I mentioned last week were moldy, did I mention those?
No.
So there was some mold last, um, the end of last week in some of the books in the vault, and I contacted disaster relief, he just called me today, but I contacted the state and this woman who does, um, historical preservation for records, um, said if it's nothing major, she could come down and do it, so she actually came down today, cleaned the books, they honestly look brandy, what an amazing job she did. She took the mold outside bin by bin and vacuumed them all and everything, got all the mold off of them. We purchased a dehumidifier for the vault, and she also recommended a, um, a control that tells you the temperature and humidity on an ongoing basis, and then you can detect what you need to do. So I asked if there's something we could put, because it's just the bottom row mostly, so I asked if there was something we could do between the floor and that that would cushion that moisture from coming up and hitting those books, and she said that might be an option, so, or even painting it with something that might seal it, but she said with the But she said with the water levels, the way they were this year, that it probably put a lot more dampness, but she said it felt very good in there today, so.
Good.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, she was awesome. And I think that's it.
Any questions or?
Oh, there's one last thing that I think for, I don't know if this was shared before for, about rebuilding the flower bed by the Proctor Coal Company. They're, they were looking to consider donating a bench, I think, for the area and repairing part of the road to the picnic area. The guys did fix all that stuff at the picnic area. In fact, Dale emailed me today and said what a great job they did, that they actually went above and beyond what he had asked them to do, so. And I see the beds are all cleaned out and Dale, like we ordered bulbs, right? Yes. And that's it.
Over at Best Street and.
Beaver Pond Room?
Beaver Pond Room, yes. Well, my oil company, have they been, I haven't paid attention.
It got mowed today, actually. I drove by and they were mowing it.
Because last time I went by was about that, like, I haven't seen it get up to here again.
It hasn't been as bad as it was, no, in the past.
Yeah, they were supposed to.
Yeah, he was, he was out there on like a regular riding lawnmower, actually. It was a wide deck one, but they were mowing, that was probably about 3:30.
Any other items for the town manager?
No, I'm waiting for a call back from Brian Sanderson. I wanted to see if he could get a schedule to have the railroad bridge inspected again. It's been a while.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
The, Bruce, did you hear anything about the bridge in Pittsburgh, 3 and 7?
No, did you have any luck talking with Bruce? If not, I expect I'll see him.
I saw him at the Fall Festival and I forgot all about it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send him an email. I'll get an answer, let you know what's going on. I'm sure he's got a better update than, than anybody, so.
Here's the questions from John. They are in bold and my answers and responses are under me, they're all. So if you want to just take a look, if you need it electronically, I can send it to you electronically.
If we have any feedback, we should send it to you.
And then I'll just fill it in and send it to John.
Is there anything else?
Do you prefer a hard copy or you want to email? I know, but how do you want to receive it?
I can either have it yourself.
Okay. Okay.
I want no trip files, I want two answers. The question is very serious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourned.